Heard the audience worked quite some time, so it was a nice, nice change.
I mean, I'm from the city northwest, you know, mountains and trees and stuff. Remember about two weeks I'm right there.
Yeah, well, see me too, when I go, um, we're from the east though, but then I go, I'm still used to being in the desert and the line is didn't provide that I feel close to COVID.
I do the same thing with trees, I'm going all the way.
Exactly.
We have, we have bad things on course, I don't bring that to mind. It's like you watch that.
I like, I like, you come to Washington, right?
Yeah.
I love Washington.
I'm from the dead center of the middle of the state. That's why I can't buy, that's why I can't buy.
Is that where, I knew fourteen, it's in the west, it's in the east.
It's in the west, it's in the east.
All right.
Yep, you have to turn your paper in.
I believe he said we could all be.
Oh, we're still up in the brush.
Oh, yeah.
My stepdad. All right, all you want to do is step aside.
Yeah.
So it's like ten days over right now. I gotta have, you just drop in charge, it's all good. I got, I've got my rules.
Oh, what, 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 what?
I already get that, I already get that. I'm looking for you, and he's in the taxi. No, he's on the next one.
The machine is, the machine is not, give me a minute.
I got it.
Do some crazy stuff down there.
But I can watch it.
Yeah, 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 they know the world out there. Around the Navy.
Most people talk a lot down there until they show up in France.
Yeah, yeah, things have to put out of a car there. They always bring stuff from the south.
And, uh, I, I called in the last, last year, say, hey, if you only tell somebody who's gonna help me, you know, just, yeah, so, give me a call back.
Okay.
Sydney, I have a second staff here. I know I can do it on my own, but.
Sitting there.
Yeah, we, we separate each other, but we say, the Navy should.
Oh, my God, they're very kind of your support. Well, that's why I said, everybody pull out your phone, and do it, you know?
Yeah, well, true.
Yeah, I don't wanna switch, I don't wanna switch off.
Yeah, I do.
I'm good, so, I've got money, thank you.
That's part of what I got to do. You know about this?
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
How you doing?
Did you have Cindy, um, Bernard?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, y'all ready? Let's kick this, call to order. Where is my Top Gun movie star at? I see him, can you listen to pledge?
I'll do that for you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Are you gonna say?
Oh.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wish, remain standing invocation by Apostle Jamie Brock.
Good evening, everyone, let us pray. Most gracious and loving Father, we thank you for the privilege to live peacefully in Twenty-Nine Palms. May you grant our mayor, city council, city manager, and everyone who holds a position of leadership in Twenty-Nine Palms, the wisdom and compassion to lead our city successfully. Give them strategies that would cause our city to prosper. Bless this meeting with your peace and humility. Let there be honor one for another amongst all who will participate in tonight's meeting. Father, we ask for your clarity to resolve all concerns presented tonight. We thank you for the safety of all who serve selflessly and live in our wonderful city. We ask for your protection over our schools, businesses, churches, and homes. We pray for strength, peace, and guidance and patience for those who are still recovering from our recent rainstorms. Help us to trust your guidance in all matters that concern Twenty-Nine Palms. In your powerful name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Councilmember Wright?
Here.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Here.
Mayor Bildery?
Here.
All present?
No close session announcements, change the agenda?
None.
None. Announcements, these proceedings may be viewed on demand on City Twenty-nine Palms website at www tweentypalms.org. You may also livestream this meeting by going on the website and clicking on media agendas link. Awards, presentation, appointments, and proclamation. The proclamation recognizing September twenty twenty-five as Hispanic Heritage Month. City of Twenty-nine Palms proclamation recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Week, now expands to Hispanic Heritage Month, was established in nineteen sixty-eight to recognize and celebrate the Hispanic heritage and the culture of the United States while highlighting Hispanic economic, culture, and creative contributions to our nation. And whereas September fifteenth is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, while Mexico and Chile celebrate their respective independence days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth. And many other Latin American countries celebrate Dia de la Rosa, did I say it right? Oh, man, and celebrate the Hispanic heritage October twelfth. And whereas the Hispanic community is active in all units of local, state, and federal government, from volunteer boards and commissions to civilian employment to elected offices, and among more than one million Hispanics have served and are currently serving in the U.S. Armed Forces. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of City of Twenty-nine Palms does hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Twenty-nine Palms, and call upon all educators, librarians, public officials, and Twenty-nine Palms residents and businesses to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs dated this ninth day of September twenty twenty-five. And to receive this proclamation is Elizabeth and Pablo Amato. Uh, the motto serves as, uh, as ministry leaders at Blessed Sacrament Catholic Church, Hispanic Ministry, and our local business owners. Would you please come on, huh? This is for you guys. They want to take a nice picture of all this. Anybody think? You're a man of many words.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I used to coach his daughter, so I know he yells a lot from the stand, so, I know he can speak.
That wasn't me.
All right, we good, next. Council comments and reports of meetings attended, Councilwoman Ramirez? I was Ramirez.
Hi, um, I met with many constituents, um, getting resources out about the recent rainstorms, and damaged me to their houses, got them connected with community, um, outreach programs. And I also met with, um, a few community leaders that are looking to push forward the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, Councilman Scott?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I ha, um, I attended the Morongo Basin Homeless Solutions Meeting, and I also attended the Twenty-nine Palms Music Committee, um, mixer that they had last night. It was very well attended, um, and I just want to appreciate all of the community members, uh, who have put in their own time and volunteered to make this possible. This is life-changing for the City of Twenty-nine Palms.
Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I met with a few, uh, constituents, um, just about the storm and things like that, and kind of opened their eyes to some of the stuff that we actually have in the city that they didn't think we had in the city, but it all worked out. And then most of my time been spent with the Walhawks Football Program. We got our first game, uh, Saturday, starting at eight o'clock, and it'll be at the Twenty-nine Palms High School, so we want everybody to come out and support us. We gonna be doing some great things this year, so, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I attended the Reach Out Two-Nine Discovery Meeting, re, re, rediscover Two-Nine Meeting, I should, said that all in one word, didn't I? And, uh, um, there was quite a few people there, I was kind of impressed, that's, that's, it's very encouraging. Went to the Sergeant Major Retirement Ceremony on base, um, had lunch at the Senior Center, and that was really good, they did a great job. I'm surprised Mac missed that one. And then, um, last, uh, Monday, I, I, I went to the SPTCA meeting, I gave the city manager, they gave us a flyer for some, uh, grants for some, um, big vehicles, so maybe we'll, you never know, we might get some of that money. But it was interesting because we did have a long discussion on how to spend thirty-seven million dollars, and we end up keeping it from being spent on a railroad, so, that was good. All right, that's all I got.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm gonna keep myself out of trouble, I'm sorry. But tomorrow I will celebrate forty years with my high school sweetheart, Alfreda. I love you.
Very nice. Yeah, you would, you'd be spending the night at the city hall. All right, first, happy birthday to all the birthdays of September. Uh, I know it's hard to believe, but my son is twenty-five this month, so I know I look twenty-five myself, so I get it. All right, entertain me. So happy birthday, all the birthdays of September. I also attended Sergeant Major's retirement, he's retiring for the thirty years, and he's gonna live in the community. So that's always a plus, he fell in love with Twenty-nine Palms, so that's good. More like Joshua Tree, but he tried to get Twenty-nine Palms, it's, it's close enough. I attended last night's meeting or event for the ten-town kickoff for the vote, well put together, well attended, a lot of information, I hope, a lot of votes last night, and a lot of, a lot of people going out with all the information, so it was a good time, thank you for that, all the people involved. And I had many meetings and emails and phone calls with constituents about the flooding. I know we're doing our best we can, uh, there was a lot of education going on on my part and their part, educating what they're going through and the education what they're actually responsible for. There's some blurred lines with city and what they do, so as homeowners, they were kind of educated. So I hope those comments on social media go farther down, on the negative side, now that they're smarter. So, um, that's all I got. Consent calendar, all matters listed under consent counters are to be considered routine by the city council and will be indicated by one motion on the form listed, any items may be removed from the consent counter and considered separately by the city council. The public will be given an opportunity to comment on the city council's calendar or the consent counter items prior to the city council's actions. Council. Pull, no, any from the public? No forms? Nope. Back up here for a motion?
I'll move the count, the consent calendar?
Second.
Third.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved five-oh.
No items removed, public hearing, none, discussion of potential action items, number eight. The designation of delegate for the Annual Cal Cities Conference.
The Cal Cities Annual Conference and Expo is a conference that council members and city manager and city clerk attend every year. This one is scheduled to be in Long Beach, October eighth through the tenth. And each year, a general assembly is formed to vote on resolutions that come through. So we ask at this time for a delegate and an alternate delegate. Now, there's only two council members that are going this time, so those two would be those assigned, but we need a delegate and an assigned alternate.
Well, I'm going, I was planning on staying, do you wanna, I can just be the delegate, you be the alternate? Okay.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Easy, 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 moving on. Number nine, Tourism Business Improvement District T-Bid Reauthorization for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
Great, and thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, so we are gonna have Ms. Briann, she is gonna deliver a presentation this evening on what the T-Bid has accomplished, uh, this, uh, this year, and what they're looking to accomplish in the coming years, and so, without any further ado, Ms. Briann?
Take it away. Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, um, we're excited to be here. This year has flown by, so here we are again, uh, sharing with you an annual report, some of the highlights of the work that we've done this year, um, sharing an overview of the budget and plan we have proposed for next year, um, seeking your approval, and also ultimately looking for an adoption of a resolution, which would allow our one point five percent T-Bid assessment fee to continue on to next year. I will really quickly, for those in the room, quick overview of the T-Bid branded as Visit Twenty-nine Palms. Our Tourism Business Improvement District was established in twenty seventeen, um, established under the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of nineteen eighty-nine, and functions as a private partnership between the city and its lodging partners. Everything we do is uniquely funded through the assessment, or the revenue generated by that one point five percent assessment fee on overnight stays at all hotels, uh, vacation rentals, and the RV resort here in our city. And levying this fee allows the city and its tourism industry the benefit of a stable, albeit short-term, funding mech, funding mechanism for tourism marketing efforts, which are all centered around enhancing destination awareness and interest through strategic marketing efforts, increasing visitor engagement through compelling content, events, experiences, strengthen, strengthening and leveraging partnerships, both locally here with businesses, with city council, um, with travel trade, travel media, as well as regional and state tourism organizations, and that's all designed to be benefit to our stakeholders and drive more overnight visitation to the city. We're overseen by a five-member advisory board appointed by our city council. Briefly, I'd just like to introduce Rakesh Mehta, who's our board chair, owner-operator of Sure Stay by Best Western, and Liz Schickler of the Twenty-nine Palms Inn and Campbell House is also here. Uh, our board members so graciously volunteer their time, their expertise, and time away from their own businesses to support these citywide efforts, um, and are helping to shape the future of tourism in the city, and we thank them very much. Excuse me. So as mentioned, we're here just to talk a little bit about some of the highlights from this last year. And as we look back on the year, it's definitely been one of both tremendous momentum and growth here in our community, and also one of pretty significant challenges within the travel and tourism industry. Um, when you look, whether it's across the country or globally, the tourism industry has faced a whole series of different headwinds. Um, twenty twenty-four was an election year, we're dealing with tariffs and trade tensions and travel advisories, inflation, rising costs. Um, we've seen the airline industry respond with significant shifts in flight routes and service patterns, um, as they adapt to the changing demand. International visitation to California is set to drop by nine percent this year, and domestic visitation is forecasted to be flat. So it's been a bit of a challenging year for us. We did, however, start off the year on a very strong note. So in our first quarter, the October through December period, we saw four percent year-over-year increase. And I just want to note that in the eight years, the T-Bid has been in existent, we, existence, we have consecutively for eight years seen growth and gain in that first quarter, the October through December period. It wasn't until our second quarter, January through March, where we really started to feel the impact of some of those factors and challenges I just mentioned. We ended that quarter down eight percent. That's really being driven by a pretty significant drop in vacation rental assessment collection, which is being driven by a drop in vacation rental inventory. We found stability through the April through Ju, June quarter. Uh, the hotel and RV category was up one percent, we'll take it. Uh, one of our two new hotels opened in that time period, but again, the VHRs saw that notable eight percent drop. So when we look at how we're doing year-to-date assessment collection through the first three quarters, totals two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, which as a two-point-five percent decrease from last year, does reflect relative stability despite some of these challenges. So as we look ahead, forecasts predict pretty modest growth for twenty twenty-six, small but steady improvements in demand and room rates and visitation. And we feel that outlook underscores the importance of the T-Bid sustaining our momentum now, so that Twenty-nine is well positioned, um, in the future as travel begins to pick up. So as mentioned, a bit of a challenging year, um, that being said, Twenty-nine Palms is most certainly on the rise, and it's something we should all hopefully feel very proud about. Uh, Hotel Ren has brought new life to a historic nineteen forties property, while Reset Hotel, the first new build in more than fifteen years, has introduced a fresh contemporary stay. Together, these properties have added seventy-seven rooms to our inventory, and it's not about more rooms, it's about more choice. Twenty-nine now offers lodging at every price point, and that makes us more competitive as a destination, ensuring that we have something for every traveler type at every price point. In addition to lodging, um, just a whole wave of new businesses that we hopefully have captured all on that next page, um, all of which are enhancing, enhancing the visitor experience and giving travelers even more reason to stay, explore, and return. Um, increasing or improving our PR efforts was a part of our plan this year, and as we look at some of the highlights, we must start with celebrating the success and the support that we've gained from Visit California in the last year. That started with being accepted to the L.A. Media Reception back in October, that was a competitive co-op, we were honored to be selected for, um, gave us a pretty powerful opportunity to connect directly with travel editors and writers and, and share our city's story. We also are so thrilled to celebrate, um, a full-page feature in the twenty twenty-five Visitor Guide that Visit California puts out, that has over a million copies in distribution, there's a lovely article with Blanca, the owner of our Habitat Shop in our downtown area, and we're very excited to see Reset Hotel, um, who will be included in an upcoming campaign through Visit California called California Joy Ride. Um, if you don't mind, Cindy, just the next page, please, thank you. Um, and that is going to be a very fun series to look forward to watching. It stars Will Forte and his mom, who travel the state in Volkswagen's all-electric ID Buzz, um, and we will share, uh, launch details when they are available. Um, so just wildly significant increase in media coverage this year, with our businesses earning the attention of regional and national publications. On this first page, um, as you see, a lot of these stories are celebrating the opening of the two new hotels, both of whom have really, um, strong PR teams helping to drive this. Um, but I just want us to reflect and take a look at the type of publications that are covering these stories. When you look at outlets like Travel and Leisure, or Vogue, or L.A. Times, or Forbes combined, we're talking publications that reach over like a hundred and million, a hundred and eighty million readers every month. So the, the impact of, of this coverage is really, um, so exciting and just something worth celebrating. On that next page here, um, we did want to intentionally spotlight, uh, the diversity in the media coverage that we've seen over the last year. Um, so beyond the new lodging properties, we've seen some really great stories, uh, that spotlight the individuals, the people behind these new businesses and their stories. We're seeing really significant, um, a, a significant increase in our representation in travel lists, which are still wildly powerful for travel consumers out there planning their trips. So whether it's National Geographic, family-friendly things to do, or eaters list of the best restaurants that you must visit when you come out to this national park, it's such a win for us to see, you know, maybe a couple of years ago, if we had one Twenty-nine Palms business on a list, great, we'd, we'd sure celebrate that. But now we're up to maybe five or six of our businesses are included on that list, which is really powerful. We're also excited to see some of the new events that we have supported, uh, through our sponsorship and event grant program, um, earning some great press coverage, um, and again, just to speak to the diversity, we've seen some of our wedding venues also, um, spotlighted in media, which is great, it's telling the story that this is also a place that you can come out and host either weddings or group retreats, and that group business is really important for us, so. Uh, not only do we try to do our best to amplify these stories, whether that's through our social media efforts or through our website, um, we also have worked specifically with the L.A. Times piece, as you see pictured here, to leverage this messaging, um, and, and really make the most of this opportunity through some of our paid advertising programs. Just some of the highlights include the work we've done this year, um, in outdoor billboards combined. When you look at the placements, um, in the Silver Lake Echo Park area and on the I-ten in Banning Beaumont, these two campaigns generated over nine million impressions. We are continuing our advertising efforts at the Palm Springs International Airport, even with challenges, um, in air service, as I briefly mentioned. The Palm Springs International Airport, um, continues to break records and continue to surge. It welcomes more than three-point-two million passengers annually, and our video placements there greet visitors as they land, um, and help tell that story of Twenty-nine being the hotspot for dining, lodging, and direct access to the national park. Uh, we're also, for the first time this year, um, executing campaigns across our local radio station, and that's to help promote upcoming events. We are also using that ad space to celebrate the new businesses. Um, we have even developed ads, uh, that are dedicated solely to lodging, so that's helping us give, uh, that's helping us create a consistent voice and messaging. In terms of our own channels, including social media, we've seen a pretty tremendous increase, uh, twenty-three percent increase in our total reach this year, a hundred and sixteen percent increase in interactions, which tells us what we're sharing, um, is interesting, impactful, informative, um, content that our followers are looking for. And speaking of followers, we've nearly doubled the number of new follows, um, across Instagram and Facebook, and we are very excited to bring a dedicated social media contractor on board, um, and to start prioritizing high-quality, short-format video content to help with our storytelling. Our website remains, uh, the hub for trip planning and visitor, visitor engagements. Um, it's really designed to balance inspirational content with helpful resources, um, that help our travelers discover everything that there is here in the city. We are encouraged, uh, to just see the engage, the quality of engagement on our website continue to improve. So visitors who are coming are digging into more pages per session, um, the direct referrals to our hospitality businesses. So you land on visit two-nine dot org, you pull up a hotel, or a restaurant, or a shop, or an attraction, you click off of our site onto theirs. That's what we are talking about when it comes to the direct referrals, and those are up twenty-six percent, so we're really excited about that. We maintain a pretty balanced acquisition mix, so visitors are coming to our site both by organic search, paid search, uh, referral, direct visits, of course, social media. And we've seen some really, um, exciting increases in engagement and visitation from some priority markets like L.A. and San Jose here in California. Exciting growth in Chicago and Hello New York, your traffic has more than doubled on our site in the last year, so that's very exciting. We are continuing, um, to support the sponsorship and event grant program, which we launched last year. This is made possible primarily through the use of T-Bid reserves. It reflects our commitment to strengthening Twenty-nine's identity and vibrancy, while also looking to build long-term momentum by working to expand our lineup of annual and signature events. In terms of, uh, activity and funding in this program this budget year, our advisory board awarded over a hundred and sixty thousand in event sponsorship and event grants across two different rounds, and that supports twenty events and over seventy-one days of programming. Uh, in addition to the marketing work that we do and running the event program, we do continue to support, um, operations of the city's visitor center on a part-time basis. We've assisted and helped more than four thousand visitors from forty-one countries, excuse me, forty-one states and sixteen countries. And we're also continuing our partnership with the city's Public Arts Advisory Committee and providing a space for their Quarterly Art in Public Places program. So as we look ahead, um, to next year, we feel we're entering with both momentum and focus. Um, our planning is based on projected T-Bid assessment revenue of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will be supplemented by two hundred thousand from our reserves, for a total budget of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Our planned expenditures total a little over four, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, with, uh, continued investments in our priority areas, including the sponsorship and event grant program. We're allocating a hundred and fifty thousand towards that next year, a hundred and seventy thousand to support, um, the broader marketing, paid advertising, and social media support, so we can continue to drive that visibility across both owned and paid channels. And in support of operations and administration, two hundred and eighteen thousand has been allocated. That includes the salary and benefit of one part-time staff, w, one full-time staff, as well as contract services to support a potential district conversion, and as always, uh, risk management by way of the contingency category. So one of the most important, um, opportunities we feel is ahead of us is that district conversion from the eighty-nine law to the ninety-four. We began this process earlier this year, but did make the intentional decision to pause as this kind of structural change really requires thoughtful planning and very much a collaborative effort. The ninety-four law brings not only five-year terms, but also a five-year management. but also a five-year management district plan, which serves as a roadmap, providing stability and that long-term vision, and one that needs to deliver clear value and have broad support to be successful and to be adopted. So, we're looking forward to doing the work, building that roadmap the right way. That means increasing alignment with our city council, developing some great communication plans to inform and educate our T-Bid stakeholders on the limitations of the eighty-nine, the benefits of the ninety-four, which seventy-five percent of T-Bids across California are already operating under. So, in closing, again, it's been a challenging year in terms of the travel landscape, but we couldn't be more excited and proud of the changes and the growth that are happening in the community and the city. We've welcomed such exciting new investments. The national media recognition is just so rewarding and encouraging. We've expanded our events landscape, and we're doing all we can to elevate the city's profile across the California desert region. So, we hope for your continued support and to build on the momentum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council questions? None? Any public notice? No?
I just had a question on the, uh, the Dobson Resolution number. What number is that?
That's coming.
Okay.
Yeah. Back up here.
What is the number, Cindy? Twenty-eight. I'll make the motion that we continue the Tourism Business Improvement District, and we adopt Resolution Number twenty-eight, confirming the invitation to levy in the assessment of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Guess I should have put my glasses on.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Protonments?
Aye.
Mayor Buildering?
Aye.
Approved, five-oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you're doing, too, and the board. I know it's a challenging year. It's just gonna get more challenging this year. Once we win that vote thing, we have ten, thirty more concerts. So, it'll be more challenging, but a lot of, uh, a lot of rewarding challenges are coming our way. So, just keep doing what you're doing and get those advertisements out there. So, thank you, thank you once again.
Thank you.
All right, future council initiated items. Any to add?
Yeah. I got one concerning the farmer's market. He asked me to ask about having a no-parking sign just before Saturday because he had two cars that was in the...
We, we, he got me to, we already addressed it. So, their staff is already working that legality and liability issue.
All right, well, I don't need... And since we on it, though, where Brienne go? Oh, Brienne. Can y'all do a little bit more advertising for the farmer's market? All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't know if this is necessarily a future-initiated item, but speaking with constituents in the businesses in the downtown area, they have concerns regarding the cleanliness of dumpsters, and I don't know how we address that.
Also, been, it's been addressed to staff, and staff's working that issue also.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think we're all talking to the same constituents, so. Yeah, so, is that, is that it? Anyone else? Talk to the same people? All right. Number five, I think number five's gonna be handled pretty soon, Mr. City Manager.
That is correct. The staff has been working with really kind of a team of experts to distill down the maintained, the non-maintained, but also I think there's a significant opportunity to share with the public, what does it take to take a dirt road from dirt road to a rural road paved to standard? And so, really trying to make this a comprehensive and informative presentation.
Yeah, I had a lot of conversations, like we do every time a flood happens, and the education part is not there. So, I gave a lot of footnotes on what I already knew from the past. So, we just, I think, new people move it in, so they're not privy to some education that the road is not a real road, it's not a real, you know, it's not a city road. So, once we get that out there, I think that will help. Because a lot of people think that just because they drive on it, the city owns it. And then they believe they pay property tax, that, you know, gas tax pays for roads. A lot of people are not aware of that either, so. Just education, so when we do this, make sure they're educated so we don't have false things going out there about things, you know?
I appreciate you saying that because that's one of the things that I have really come to realize is that there's a real, and I'm gonna just talk about it more during City Manager comments, and that is, is the opportunity for that communication and education.
Okay.
Because there are, you know, the times that I've been able to interact with individuals one-on-one and really explain what goes into it, by the end of the phone call, they, they recognize the city's situation. But prior to that, they didn't know. And why is that? And that's that opportunity for education.
I just want number five to be just a list of roads and prices. I just want to make sure it's educated type, okay?
Yeah, miss, also though, with number five, though, is there any way, though, you know, we understand that there are unmaintained roads in our city, but I think a lot of residents have more of a concern about during a state of emergency, is clearing a road maintenance? And I was wanting, I sent an email to the city manager and city attorney to find that...
And that's been, also I had that conversation, people, there is a line where we can assess and help. And there's times, if there's a need to get it cleared because...
Emergency.
Emergency, yes, we have the right to do things for safe and reliable sources of... But, because Amazon can't drop off your package that day, that does not mean we run out there and clear the road. So, that's, that's the education part that we were talking about. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. We good? All right. Public comments. This is the time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and should not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courtesy decorum during their comments. There's a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you haven't already done so, please fill out your name and address slips and give it to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included in the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration of the item on the agenda. Leading off. Was it Caitlin Gil? Almost said Catherine. Oh, wait, wait, no, I saw the last name, so.
I just wanted to thank the council for your support of T-Bid and any, any effort that builds up the name of Twenty-nine Palms and helps support the rapid growth of particularly small businesses in our community. I'm speaking as a business owner, Joshua Tree Astronomy Adventures, and also member-at-large for Rediscover Twenty-nine. I wanted to compliment members of the council and City Manager James for taking interest in Rediscover Twenty-nine, which has seen explosive growth over the last year in particular. The numbers joining that group in order to come together, network, and develop businesses that are young and growing in our community has been really remarkable to be a part of. And I think that swell of interest, engagement, and commitment is something the city should be very proud of and support in every way we can. Many of the businesses, my own included, are dependent upon tourism, so every effort the city can make to support visitors coming here and contributing to this community before they leave financially and culturally is vitally important to the growth of what's begun here. So, many seeds have been planted in the last year. Many of them are starting to flourish, and watching that happen in community has been just really wonderful to be a part of. So, if any council member is curious to attend a Rediscover Twenty-nine first Monday at the Schoolhouse Museum, it's really rewarding. There's also a mixer coming up. These are all dates readily available on the Rediscover Twenty-nine site. It's really a worthwhile endeavor. They're not a formal lobbying board. I would not present any point of view expressed by that board in any official capacity here beyond saying that the networking happening is, is really remarkable and worth being a part of. It's also a central place where people who've invested time, money, and commitment to this community are gathered, and that's something we share in common with everybody at this day. So, it's a, it's a great opportunity to take more advantage of. And in my own self-interest, I want to remind everyone that part of the pillars of our tourism growth is astronomy. Our dark skies are vitally important, and supporting any effort we can to make sure our city's growth does not compromise our stellar views is critical. I think that's something we're pretty well focused on, but as we grow, it's gonna be important to keep in mind, especially in the conversation regarding maintained roads. Our community don't think mandates are as useful as support. So, any way a business can be supported and developing in a way that maintains those dark skies is, is much appreciated on a personal level, but I think on a civic level will reap rewards. So, anyone who wants to come see what Rediscover Twenty-nine is up to, I can't encourage it enough. The growth is, we're over sixty members now. Those are sixty business owners committed to watching this town grow and succeed. So, it's a good time to get in. If you haven't spent a lot of time there, now's the time. And come take a start tour.
Thank you. Always mess up your last name, M.J. M.J. Vioco.
There was an item on future council initiatives, initiated items that wasn't discussed. What is a recognized neighborhood program?
We can get what you afterwards.
Yeah, we...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, it was on it, and you didn't say anything, so, just curious.
It's, it's a future-initiated item, that why. It's for the, it's for staff to work on, so eventually you'll be on the agenda to talk about.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, it was on the agenda more. I just, I just thought there, I thought there would be an explanation about what the item was. That's all. I'll be happy to catch up.
Staff hasn't done all the work to get it to the agenda, but we can't talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll catch you later.
It's an idea right now. Thank you. Oh, wow. Nicole Crossley Townsend, is that a, is that it? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you for your service. I served in the military for eleven years. I came to Twenty-nine Palms back in twenty-twenty and bought my first home through the VA. And since I've been there in twenty-twenty-four, they came and put the telephone pole in, and I noticed that my whole backyard flooded out. Everything was going fine before that. Then, I noticed that more of the telephone poles are being put in, and then when they use the utility vehicles, I noticed that it kind of flushes all of the terrain past my home, and so I'm becoming very concerned because that's my house, and I don't, I, I have, I've been losing sleep over this. And it's the south side of mourning. And I know there's gonna be a lot of probably home building and everything, and I'm just, I'm not being able to sleep because I'm afraid of the fences being put in. And every time they dig the, in the, in the terrain because it's really soft terrain, very delicate. And when it rains, it, it just floods the whole, my fences, and I, they came in and fixed the fences and, and, um... And all of that work is, was just washed away. So, I, I, I needed to get this on record because I have all of the insurances, but I, I just, the house is a very nice house. And, you know, I, I served in another military branch, and, but I came to Twenty-nine Palms to, because I, you know, I believe in the Marines. I have Marines, a Marine in my family. And so, I'm trying to preserve this house, but I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do it because of the, any construction and the, you know, every time they're digging in that, in the ground over there, it gets, it, it, I think it's disrupting the ground. So, that's all I have to say. I just want to get it on record that you guys know that I'm over there and I'm not sleeping.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. So, don't you get that?
And so, Mayor, it would be great if Ms. Townsend was to stay after so we could get her address, so we know where her home is.
I have.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, great. Thank you.
She's on...
Morning, on morning. I thought it was two.
Ma'am, you said morning drive? Because your thing says Sald... Can, can you stay after before we get the, because your sheet says Saldana or Saldana? Morning is, okay, I just want to make sure we got the right one. Okay, thank you. Christopher Beckford, did I say it right? All right. It's gotta be you then, you know the name.
All right. Christopher Michael Bigford, two thousand and one, Wildcat graduate and Army Vet, whoa, Colorado Mesa Business Student. Quick statement, God first, my kids second, my family third. God will decide the rest. What we need is a Veterans Art Center, where veterans, disabled or not, can go to unwind instead of doing negative things that bring us down. There is one in Grand Junction, Colorado, where I started my family, and I was there for thirteen years, as well as a VA hospital, which provided help for me. But due to recent situations, I'm probably not gonna be able to drive soon. I have ten days sober. Congratulations to me for that. As an Army veteran, it's hard, disabled veteran at that. But I did grow up out here. My brother-in-law is a former Marine drill instructor, got me ready for the Army, and I got a pass. We all got passed. I'm not here to put no one down, but those are things that we could use. And I did talk to Set Free today about possibly checking in at Set Free so that, you know, I could take my vehicle there, go do that. I've done rehab twice, so I'll do it a third time. I've done it plenty of times. And pray for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a blessed night.
We'll have, we'll be praying. And also, Mil Tree. Is that what you're gonna tell him? Okay.
Sir, sir, sir.
You know about Mil Tree? Mil Tree is Veteran Arts. It's out of Joshua Tree, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it Joshua Tree?
Yes.
Okay, I'll look it up.
You got it.
She'll give you the info.
Good. Be good. Audrey Philpott? Oh, here he comes, scanned my shirt.
Really? Good, good evening, city council members and city staff. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. I am here to report on the results that we have created thus far in the public voting campaign for the Levitt Grant for thirty concerts in three years for Twenty-nine Palms. I am the chairperson of the Twenty-nine Palms Music Series Committee, and the Music Series Committee is an affiliate of the Basinwide Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), which serves our entire Morongo Basin area. And I am proud to tell you that we are now number nineteen out of a hundred different cities competing for this grant. Now, it's not a time for us to sit back on our laurels because a lot of these cities are much bigger than us, and they have the power of more people who can vote. But, we may be small, but we are mighty, and we are determined, and we have a lot of plans. I just want to tell you about a couple of things that we're doing. First of all, we are advertising on one oh seven seven FM. We have three spots per day. Maybe some of you have heard them, they're beautiful spots, and that just lets people know what's going on. We have a story coming out tomorrow in the High Desert Star. We have something going up on KESQ website tomorrow. We have reached out to a lot of local media. We have a lot of local musicians who have made beautiful thirty-second spots talking about why they love live music. And on and on, we have interacted with many community organizations. I know that Leanne and the Ministerial Association is involved in getting the word out into that community, but it is literally every facet of this community that we have reached out to. facet of this community that we have reached out to. Yesterday, we had a, a very successful mixer, which was referred to. And I want to acknowledge the fact that we received donations from Wing In It, which is a local restaurant. We received donations from Campbell Hill Bakery. We received those donations from Grocery Outlet. We received donations from Twenty-Nine Loaves, which makes delicious cheese puffs. You have to try them, they're really good. And so on and so forth. So there's been a tremendous amount of community support to get this going. We also have an affiliation with the Youth Council of the Park and Rec Department and also with interact through the Rotary and the Kiwanis Club. I could go on and on. I know I have a limited amount of time. But what I wanna say is that I'm here, my shirt is here, my walking billboard in case you haven't noticed. And, uh, I also wanna thank Ashton Ramsey, who I just noticed in the audience, because he hosted our mixer last night in Tin Town. And it, you know, it was, uh, he's been a real friend to our committee and we wanna thank him. So, thank you very much for the time and let's all vote. Voting is important and it's easy. And I will be here after the meeting if anybody has any questions whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leann Clark?
Thank you. Well, on behalf of Action Twenty-Nine Palms, I wanted to share that I received a call from a gentleman who works for the task force. And he's involved with a campaign to protect public land and in particular Chukwala National Monument. And evidently, this has been a campaign that's been going on in order to protect uh, places like the Joshua Tree National Park, things of that nature. At any rate, um, they are interested in putting up a mural in our community uh, to bring attention towards the protection of national monuments. And so I'll be talking to him more. Uh, however, I feel like I'm on extreme makeover because it has to be done and unveiled by the twenty-seventh of this month. And so, uh, I told him, we'll see how we can do. I've pulled off many things. And, um, but I'm reaching out with the PAC to talk with them and then Keith as well, uh, to see if this is something we can accommodate. They are paying all the expenses. They have a professional artist lined up. They will be staying overnight, so that again is something that brings revenue to our community. And, uh, so it seems like it's a possible win-win situation, but I'll keep you informed. The other thing is, as Brienne gave her report on T-Bid, my husband brought to my attention, Route sixty-six is returning June twentieth through twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-six. The twenty-twenty-six race begins in Springfield, Illinois and runs along Historic Route sixty-six to beautiful Pasadena, California. And Twenty-Nine Palms is on the stop map. So this is a big deal for our community again, for next year. It's a huge, huge thing. My husband's a big car advocate and so he has been nagging me since he saw this. What is the city doing? So I just wanna say thank you, Brienne. I don't know how you guys did it, but you got us on the map and thank you and, uh, appreciate the Council and everything y'all are doing. Have a great night.
Thank you. Oh, no. City Manager's update? Three, four minutes.
Well, thank you, uh, very much. Uh, I, I promise I, I won't go more than twenty, thirty, forty minutes. So, uh, so a couple of things, we alluded to it earlier. So thank you for the community that came together in the recent storm and the storm response. You saw the photos, you saw the volume of water, uh, that came down. And when I was out in the field, what I saw and what I felt was a much greater cohesion amongst the community and also all of the first responders. It was impressive to see the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, the National Park Service. They even reached out to the county, San Bernardino County Probation Officers, and there were, uh, officers of, uh, patrol vehicles that were able to come out into the field and to cover or to close down the intersections that were flooding and that people could, you know, end up getting hurt or killed. Thankfully, there were no injuries that I'm aware of, certainly no deaths. So, it was great to see as a community, us really coming together and being a little bit more resilient. I know when we had the Adobe Punch Bowl, when that filled up, we didn't have a situation like we did last year where people drove in the closed-off streets and ended up striking the, the fire hydrant and then adding two thousand gallons, fifteen hundred gallons a minute to the problem. So, one of the things that I did realize from this event was the fact that there is an opportunity on the city's behalf to improve the education and the communication on some of the things that our staff takes for granted. Or that could be even a, as simple as, what is the methodology that the city uses when clearing roads? We've got some feedback from folks saying, hey, you know, my, my residential street is filled with debris. When are you gonna come out and clean it up? And so, unfortunately, given the fact that we have such a small staff and we are tasked with doing so much, uh, this is gonna be an item that's gonna be put on the list, but that is something that we are gonna work on, is putting out that material so that people can understand that in the storm response, the Public Works Crew, which by the way, has been absolutely amazing, and has been working overtime and has been working on their days off and late in the evening. They prioritize roads based on speed, based on speed and then also the traffic volume. And so you can appreciate, if you're driving a car on a twenty-five mile an hour road, you've got debris, you're gonna go slow and you're gonna be safer. It's a lot more dangerous if you've got a road that's sixty miles an hour or fifty-five miles an hour. And there is, let's say, part of the road on the side of the road has been undermined and so you could potentially catch a tire and roll the vehicle. So, Public Works has been very strategic and very intentional on clearing roads based on what could cause the greatest injury or loss of life. So, th- there will be additional communications forthcoming from the city. Uh, one of the things we're also gonna be doing is analyzing the cost of road construction and road maintenance. Uh, that is a question that, uh, that has been asked by the Council and has been asked by the community. I have been trying to put out there. Some people have asked, hey, I have a dirt road. I wanna have it paved. Why can't you do that? And it typically costs one point three million dollars to build one mile of road. And that is to build a mile of road to a rural road standard. So what is a rural road standard? That is kind of the, 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 the least costly road that we have. So that's rolled curbs, that's not, uh, concrete, you know, uh, streets, curbs and gutters. It's just the basic road. So that's something that's gonna be forthcoming. One of the things also that some community members had brought up was they've got debris, uh, as a result of the flood. Can we have trash dumpsters brought out and delivered in the community? And so that was something that we, we did do last year and there were some, there, there were some wins with that. There were also some problems with that. And that has to deal with some of the requirements from the state. And it really has to do with, uh, contamination. Materials that are placed in the bins that shouldn't be in the bins, that may be hazardous. Or materials that, uh, if you put green waste in a bin, the green waste, according to, uh, AB thirteen eighty-three, that has to be processed separately. That cannot go with the typical trash. So, one of the things that I think a lot of people forget they have, and it's a, a great item that we've got in the contract that we have negotiated with BRTech. And that is, is if you have a single-family detached house, so you either own it or you rent it. If you have BRTech service, which in all likely you do, you, as a part of the fee that you already pay, you can have BRTech come out and do a bulk item pickup up to four times a year. So if you've got something that got spoiled, that's not green waste, if you've got a, a bed that was ruined or you have something that was ruined, you can, you get on the BRTech website. It is very easy. They tell you what you, they can pick up, what they cannot pick up. And you can literally schedule online and they can generally be out in about a week in order to pick it up. And you can have up to four of those items per year. And then something else that the city is doing is on November eighth, I believe. And that is gonna be the Fall Community Cleanup, November eighth. It's gonna start at seven AM. It's gonna be at Lucky Park. And that is gonna be an opportunity for members of the community, if they have some old tires, if they've got e-waste, old TVs, if they have appliances, if they have documents they need to shred. That is your opportunity to bring that in and you can give it to BRTech. And then lastly, uh, Ms. Gill did a great job of talking about the Rediscover Twenty-Nine. What an impressive business organization. A couple of years ago, they had five members. And as Ms. Gill pointed out, they're now approaching seventy. And really neat what they're trying to do to market our area, to improve the level of service. Some really exciting people that are doing it. One of the things they mentioned on Monday was the fact that they could use more volunteers. So each of the people that attend those meetings, they run businesses. So they have a business, they have a family. And they're also trying to volunteer at events. And I think that they would appreciate some good members of the community, if they wanted to help support our businesses, volunteer at these various events. And with that, I will close. Thank you.
Short of an hour. The whole meeting, not your, not, not your, not your comments, this, the meeting in general. That's a record one, all right. But before we go, do you have, do you have to announce Saturday?
So, um, this Saturday, we'll be having a Hispanic Heritage Celebration. The tone of it, um, is going to mimic that of the Twenty-Nine Palms Music Series, should it go through. So it's a free, free music, free entertainment, arts, crafts, foods. We're partnering together with the, um, Farmer's Market. Mr. Thomas has been very amazing in, in getting us, you know, vendors and the support and everything and really the idea is to not only celebrate the Hispanic culture, but also to, you know, give the community a taste of what we could have if we meet the votes for the Levitt Foundation Grant. Um, so it'll be at Freedom Plaza from five to nine this Saturday, completely free, family-friendly, and we hope to see everybody there.